Follow us on TikTok, Instagram and Twitter. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit that notification bell so that you don't miss out on anything. Be part of the conversation. Tell us what you think in the comment section and please like and share our videos with your friends and family. The next broadcast will start shortly. If you care about South Africa and want to make a positive difference, then join the DA. Visit our website at DA.org.za for more information. Find out who represents you in your ward and district and who are the DA mayors working for you in your town or city and which MPs represent you and your causes in parliament. On our website, you can learn more about our latest campaigns and how you can get involved. Join the Democratic Alliance to Rescue South Africa. Become an activist, become a councillor, become a member of parliament if you care about South Africa. Please visit donate.da.org.za. Donate to a cause you believe in. Donate to make a difference. Did you know the best-run municipalities in South Africa are all governed by the DA? DA mayors are working hard to protect residents from national government failures by getting the basics right, delivering better services and having zero tolerance for corruption. This is the DA difference. The next broadcast will start shortly. Follow us on social media for the latest in news and politics in South Africa. Like and follow our page on Facebook. Follow us on TikTok, Instagram and Twitter. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit that notification bell so that you don't miss out on anything. Be part of the conversation. Tell us what you think in the comment section and please like and share our videos with your friends and family. The next broadcast will start shortly. If you care about South Africa and want to make a positive difference, then join the DA. Visit our website at DA.org.za for more information. Find out who represents you in your ward and district and who are the DA mayors working for you in your town or city and which MPs represent you and your causes in parliament. On our website, you can learn more about our latest campaigns and how you can get involved. Join the Democratic Alliance to Rescue South Africa. Become an activist, become a councillor, become a member of parliament if you care about South Africa. Please visit donate.da.org.za. Donate to a cause you believe in. Donate to make a difference. Let's rescue South Africa. Join the DA because the DA gets things done.
Power utility Eskom has confirmed that it has requested steep tariff increases from the National Energy Regulator.
Eskom has asked the National Energy Regulator of South Africa for a whopping 36% increase.
There is growing outrage over Eskom's proposed 36% electricity tariff hike.
Eskom's tariff hike proposal has outraged consumers who say it is too high and unaffordable. There are growing calls for government to intervene.
The suggested increase could have substantial repercussions for South African households and businesses.
Eskom has increased electricity prices by 450% since 2007, placing unbearable financial strain on South African households and businesses.
The proposal has faced immediate backlash with the Democratic Alliance urging its rejection.
Residents are paying the price for government's inefficiencies.
Now, what this does is it incentivizes those inefficiencies at Eskom because it says, well, Eskom, if you don't do your job properly, you can claw that money back from the consumers in the next financial year. And that's really not fair.
We are having to bear the cost of years and years of Eskom being run badly and now you're passing that on to the consumer.
I don't know what can I say, but this is not good.
The price is already high. Hundred dr and get like 20 units, so it's bad for us.
Did you know that Eskom wants you to pay for their corruption and mismanagement? Hello, South Africa. My name is Louis Olompeti and we are live in Cape Town where the first NERSA hearings are taking place. Now, South Africans have been facing an ongoing high cost of living across our country and we are saying as the DA, this is unacceptable. And now Eskom wants to hike the electricity tariff by 40%. The DA is here today to stand against that. Now, if you're watching this from home, please make sure that your family and friends like and share this broadcast and join the conversation using the hashtag StopElectricityPriceHike. We'll be hearing from various DA leaders today who will be speaking to us about the NERSA tariff hike. But right now, we are joined by Mayor Jordan Hill-Lewis, who will be speaking to us about this proposed tariff hike from NERSA. Good morning, Jordan. How are you feeling today?
I'm feeling great, man. It's great to be out here outside these NERSA hearings with so many wonderful activists that have turned up to send a very clear and powerful and loud message that this 40% hike is unacceptable and unfair and unaffordable.
Now, Mr. Mayor, we're here at the very first NERSA hearing. What does this hearing mean for South Africans who are worried about this?
Well, Luyolo, 40% tariff hike would be crushing for many South African families. Remember that over the last decade, we've had more than 400% in hikes, but this would be the biggest one yet. After all of the increases that we've had, Eskom still can't turn a profit. In fact, they're still making massive losses. Yes, we may have had a few months with no load shedding, but they are still losing money like water and they are making us, the ordinary South Africans, pay for it over and over again. And in fact, we don't just pay once, we pay twice because we're also paying for bailouts through our normal taxes. So we're saying this has got to stop. Eskom cannot keep making South African families pay for their failures. It's their failures. They've got to take responsibility, get more efficient, break up the company, don't make us pay for it.
Now, Mr. Mayor, we know that the most vulnerable South Africans are going to be the most impacted by this high tariff cost. It's unjust, but what is the reality for those families who are barely making it?
Well, obviously, they're going to find it incredibly difficult to even buy electricity. But it's not only that, Luyolo. We must remember electricity is a cost for everyone in the economy, every business, every farmer. So you're going to see food prices going up again. We've just gone through inflation. We've just struggled as a country to get inflation under control. Now you're going to hike it back up again because food prices are going to go up. The price of everything that you buy in the shop is going to go up, clothes, everything. Because electricity is a big input cost into those things as well. So it's not just going to affect your electricity bill. Families who are struggling the most are going to crack under the pressure of this price hike.
And the DA is not only here to protest, but there's been plans that the DA has been putting in place, especially in the city of Cape Town and DA-run municipalities. Can we maybe hear what is the DA doing to stop the dependence on Eskom in our country?
I'm so glad that you worded it like that because that is the secret. We have to reduce our dependence on Eskom as quickly as we can. That is what we are trying to do in the city. We are trying to buy power from other sources. We're already up to just under 200 megawatts of power that we are buying from other sources. And you know what, Luyolo? To everyone watching at home, every single one of those megawatts is cheaper than Eskom. And that is the future. We have to cut our ties. Now, of course, it's going to take time because our city uses two and a half thousand megawatts. So we still, we've got a long way to go, but as quickly as we can reduce our reliance on Eskom and eventually one day switch off that plug, the better for our residents, the more we can save them money and bring down the cost of electricity.
And so, Mr. Mayor, before I let you go, what is your final word to people watching at home who are very concerned about this particular tariff hike? What can you say to them that the DA is doing?
Well, I think it is from what we can see today, it is only the DA that is fighting for you to stop this 40% tariff hike. It is only the DA that is here and participating in every NERSA hearing in the country to send the message loud and clear to NERSA, stop letting Eskom bleed us dry. Stop this 40% hike. So I'm grateful to the DA, I'm grateful to you, Luyolo, and the others for being here so that we can stand up for ordinary residents of South Africa.
And there we have it. That is the mayor of Cape Town, Mr. Jordan Hill-Lewis, making his voice known with all of our voices known that we need to stop this 40% tariff hike. We cannot afford it as South Africans. And I think Jordan has been clear in his message to let us know that the impact for South Africans in this country is going to be tremendous. It's going to be a hard onslaught on working families in this country who are continually struggling to pay and to live in this high-cost economy. And so it is very clear, South Africa, that we need to raise our voices against this 40% tariff hike. It is unjust. We cannot afford it. And I think Mayor Jordan has really spoken to us very clearly. But right now, we are going to head to the protest where it's taking place to hear from other DA leaders who are raising their voices against this high 40% tariff hike.
Amazaa! Amazaa! Away to? Viva DA, viva! Viva DA, viva! Down with the Eskom 40% tariff hike, down! Democrats, good morning. I want to greet everybody else who's also tuning in live. Today, we are here for a reason, Asatua.
Yeah!
We're here because we are upset as a nation. As the Democratic Alliance here in the Western Cape have decided that we are not going to sit back and be quiet. We're coming here to the NERSA hearings because we have an appointment with the future of this country. Eskom has failed the nation in many ways. Eskom is the reason why we have to choose between putting food on the table and having the lights on. We already have a cost of living crisis in this country and we're not going to allow Eskom to plunge us further into a cost of living crisis. They've childhood funds that we've given them, we've built them out time and time again. We are not going to build them out any further. Before we go inside, we also want to make it clear here in the streets of why we're here as the Democratic Alliance. We have a number of people who are very important, the mayor of the city of Cape Town, the premier of the Western Cape, as well as our chairperson, a federal chairperson, Dr. Mayor. And as people who govern this province and the city, they are going to tell us on behalf of their residents why they are in opposition of this 40% tariff hike. Now, first, want to call on the mayor of the city of Cape Town, the only metro in South Africa that actually works in the best interests of South Africans. Ladies and gentlemen, help me welcome onto the podium Mayor Jordan Hill-Lewis.
Gueimore Amol! Molweni! Good morning. Assalamualaikum. Thank you for being here. It's wonderful to see so many beautiful activists, so many people from the Blue Machine. I appreciate it. I think the NERSA hearings are starting soon in this hotel and we are here to send a loud and clear message, not just through this speakerphone, but also we will have our team inside the hearings conveying this message loud and clear. The Democratic Alliance and all of our governments around South Africa reject this 40% price hike. It is unfair. It is unaffordable and it is outrageous. You know, we've just as a country managed to get our inflation rate down to 4%. And I think when Eskom saw that, they said, let's just add on a zero to that. Because why would we fight for the last two or three years to get our inflation rate down to 4% only to do something which is going to knock it right back up again? Because electricity prices is not just about the price of the units that you buy for your meter, it's about the price of everything. Everything, every business here uses electricity as one of its biggest costs. So the price of food is going to go up if this increase is approved. The price of clothes, the price of every service, everything is going to go up if this increase is approved. That is why we are saying it is so unaffordable. But you really understand what Eskom is trying to get away with when you read the detail of their application. I went and read the detail of their application. You know, they are saying that one of the reasons they need such a massive increase is because they are selling less electricity. I just want to remind them that the reason that they're selling less electricity is because they keep putting the price of it up. That is why they're selling less electricity. So their logic goes like this, we sell less, so you've got to pay more. So we sell even less, so you've got to pay even more. So we sell less and you've got to pay even more. And on and on we go with no end. We say it's got to stop. It's got to stop. Next, they say, we've got to be compensated for our costs. They keep using this word cost reflective tariffs. Have you heard that? I want to say, what are those costs? Because they don't tell us what they are. We know that Eskom is massively unprofitable, it's hugely loss-making, even after they've raised tariffs more than 400% over the last decade, they still can't even break even. So then surely the issue is with your costs, not with the price of the electricity. You've got to get your costs under control, Eskom and NERSA. You can't allow them to keep pushing those costs onto ordinary South Africans and Cape Townians. It's got to stop. So we're going to be in there, we're going to make our voice loud and clear that this increase is unacceptable. But whatever NERSA does, even if they only approve half the tariff, it's still too much. It's still going to be 20. It's still going to be 20. So actually, what we have to do, and that is what we are doing in Cape Town, is we are trying as quickly as we can to reduce our dependence on Eskom. Over time, we've got to cut Eskom's power and make sure that we provide our own power in the city of Cape Town. In the city of Cape Town and in every other DA governed municipality and city and province in our country. And that is why we're trying to buy power from independent power producers as fast as we can. And you know what? Let me tell you a secret. We're nearly on 200 megawatts. That's not the secret. But every single one of those megawatts, every one of them is cheaper than Eskom. Every one of them. Which just shows you that it can be done. It's not impossible to bring down the costs. But we've got to go out and aggressively reduce our reliance on Eskom as quickly as we can, and that is what we are doing. We are also finally doing a lot to try and protect poorer families in our city from the impact of these massive hikes. We are already providing 63 units for people on the lifeline tariff every single month to people in Cape Town. Now, the governments, the national government, the national treasury only pays us for 50. We pay here in Cape Town for the top-up of the extra 10 units in Cape Town. Secondly, we have just reduced the price of our lifeline tariff and increased the number of units that you can buy on the lifeline tariff. Previously, we said you could buy 350 units on lifeline. You know that in this last budget, we increased that to 450 units that you can buy on the lifeline tariff. That is a huge price saving for the people in our city who need it the most. So we are doing what we can. We will do everything that we can. But the fact is, when you get massive increases like this, NERSA and Eskom are really bleeding our country dry. And I want to say, if they are listening, I'm sure they're enjoying their coffee, hear this loud and clear. Here in Cape Town, here in the DA, we say, ons is hatful for Eskom Suppressor. We say, genug is genug. And we say, stop this crazy 40% price hike.
Halala, Jordan Hill-Lewis, halala. I want to say this again. The Democratic Alliance in the city of Cape Town is hatful with Eskom. We are saying, genug is genug. We will not have this increase, not under our watch. Again, let's give it up to the mayor of the city of Cape Town, Jordan Hill-Lewis. Now, not only does the city of Cape Town fit up and refusing to have this 40% increase, we also in this province, under our government, have a premier that says, under his watch, we will not have this happening. Now, we have a premier that can say this boldly because his province is the only province in this country that actually works. That is the only province that has an unemployment rate that is below 20% in South Africa. So I'm very proud to hand over this mic to this man because he knows what he's talking about. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give it up to the premier of the Western Cape, Alan Wendy!
Molweni, gueimore! Halala! Netsozi Berchem is a say, genug is? Genug is? Absolute. So absolutely, in the city of Cape Town, we are working very hard to make sure that we reduce the reliance on Eskom and we get more and more independent power and we're doing exactly the same thing across the whole Western Cape. We have an energy council that pulls together all of our municipalities, the best technology and private sector investment so that we can get not 4,000 megawatts is what we use from Eskom at the moment, but 5,700 megawatts in this plan. And like the mayor said, last year, 734 new megawatts came into the system across the Western Cape, 1,000 megawatts in the pipeline. So no matter what happens, we are busy sorting out the problem. We have a plan and it is being delivered on. But today, we are not here about the plan. Today, we are here to say, no! Ots kani 40% verwogen kry ob krach ni? Because when you put up our power costs more than inflation, you take food off our tables. When you increase eight times more the inflation rate of electricity prices in next year, you will make us poorer. And our citizens already know that food is costing too much at the moment. We know that it is becoming harder and harder to make ends meet and we cannot afford this kind of electricity increase. So ons efa la nia? Nia! So that is why we are gathered here today to show the Democratic Alliance is standing with the citizens of the city, with the citizens of this province and with the citizens of South Africa. We stand with you because we know what it is like. We know how much it costs. You go and you buy those units, you put them in and they don't last very long. And you've got to cook food for your kids. You've got to make sure you've got the lights on so that they can study for school. Because we've got to make sure we get this right. Because as was said, we have got to focus on making sure we get the economy going and people into jobs. And when your expenses are so high, you cannot get that going. And that's why we say no. That's why we say inflation rate is the kind of increases. And you know, two years ago, it was 18%. Last year, it was 13%. Now they want 40%. They are crazy asking for these kind of increases. And the problem, why our economy is so slow, the reason we can't even get 0.8% GDP growth rate in our economy is directly at the doorstep of Eskom because they've given us no electricity over the last two years. Load shedding has caused job losses and that has to be rectified. We cannot afford to give them increases because that rewards their bad management. They are not able to put power in the grid, but don't worry, here we will do that. But we've got to stand up and say no to this electricity increase. Genug is genug! Thank you.
So imagine a 40% now, when since 2007, the same Eskom has increased the cost of electricity by 450%. This is an ongoing cycle that we, as the Democratic Alliance, completely and totally reject. So not only do we have the mayor of the city and the premier of this province saying no, but while other political parties, national executive committees or whatever they call themselves, our federal, federal leadership is backing the call to be on the side of South Africans, backing the call to say no to an increase of electricity that makes it mwelek to take your children to school with a warm bath, that makes it mwelek for you to ensure that there's a warm meal inside the house for the kids when they come back to school, that makes it mwelek for you to even decide if you're going to wash the laundry or not if you have a washing machine. So this is something that we're not going to have and our federal leadership is very resolute on that and very clear. But you don't have to hear that from me. We have our federal chairperson of the Democratic Alliance here, Dr. Ivan Mayer, who's going to make it clear to South Africans why the whole country, the whole Democratic Alliance in the whole country rejects this. Now, ladies and gentlemen, help me warmly hand over this microphone to Dr. Ivan Mayer.
Good morning to the people of Cape Town. Good morning to our activists. You are the real leaders. Because leadership is action and today is Action Day right here in Cape Town. But what is happening here today? In this building, there's a public hearing. What does the word means? The day must hear the public. And so this is a public hearing and at this public hearing, we give a message and the message is clear. Stop Eskom's 40% hike. Stop the 40% hike. This is the message of the public hearing. You are sitting up there drinking coffee in the public hearing. The only reason why you can drink coffee is because Cape Town provide electricity. Otherwise, your coffee will be cold! And this public is here with their voices. People, as the mayor and as the premier said, people are tired, but they're more than tired. They are hatful! So this message is the message of the public hearing taking place here today. But the public hearing must convey a message. And this is our message to this public hearing. I hope people understand that it's a public hearing, so your ears must be open. It's no good to have a public hearing and your ears are closed. So to the public hearing, open your ears! Open your eyes! Open your hearts! So this is our message. Eskom's proposal is unaffordable and it is costing South Africans millions. The second message at this public hearing is that people will be forced between water, food and electricity. So people have choices that's impossible to make. The third message at this public hearing is that the tariff increase will close down businesses, as the mayor and the premier said, businesses will close down. I recently went to a woman who is running a laundry shop. I, with this 40% increase, even with a 20% increase, that woman will have to close her business in Drakenstein. So this increase will lead to more job losses. As the mayor indicated, we had 4% inflation. This increase will push up inflation and the general cost of living. Number five, for those who are hearing, because this is a public hearing and not a public speaking, so you will have to listen. Poor people, the working class, and now also the middle class will be severely hit by this 40% increase. Public hearing, listen to the people. People are tired of paying for a corruption tax. This 40% is a corruption tax because over the last 30 years, Escom has increased the tariffs by 1,700%. Corruption tax, not 40%, over the last 30 years, they increased your electricity by Did anybody get a 1,700 salary increase? Did Sasa increase by 1,700? Did your salary increase? That is a corruption tax. As citizens of South Africa, we say no more. Tot hiertu any ferd any van die mensen is hart. Escom, jou twak is naak. Escom het laatst gesee, alles steenkoel is naak. Mister Luiso, is nie alles steenkoel wat naak is nie, as alle twak is naak. I'm so happy that our government, under the leadership of Premier Windi, has already tabled submissions to NERSA. And our submission, we are objecting to 40% increase because it lacks transparency, it lacks efficiency and there's poor control mechanisms. But also, at the level of the ordinary citizens, it is simply unaffordable. And therefore, we believe in a competitive process for unbundling the electricity industry that is the generation, that is the transmission and the distribution. I'm so happy that the city of Cape Town is leading in this fight. The city of Cape Town is even allowing businesses that generate extra electricity to get cash back. In future, citizens will also get cash back because we are generating our own electricity. And so the Western Cape government is, as the premier said, develop an energy resilience plan. That plan says currently, we are using 4,000 megawatt from Escom, but the plan of the premier is to generate 5,700 megawatt. 2,000 of that megawatt is already in the procurement and 743 is already in the system. And so we are making plans to protect the citizens of the Western Cape. And our DA mayors across the country, not only here in the Western Cape, we have asked all the mayors in other provinces, also the mayor in Koga, there in the Eastern Cape, to reject this 40% hike. Every DA mayor across the country has opposed this 40% hike. This is a public hearing and you must hear the message from the public. And so our mayors believe it is possible to bring affordable energy into the system and so across the Western Cape, where the government is, in the DA, we are making sure to protect the citizens. We have started already 10 years ago with a project to get the tariff structure redesigned, the tariff structure for municipalities. In Madwaal, the only municipality in Gauteng, a DA-run municipality, is now having plans to procure power from independent power producers. Madwaal is a DA-run municipality. They're going to kick Escom soon. There's already a council resolution in Madwaal. They're going to get rid of Escom because as the mayor said, you get less electricity, they sell less, but they charge you more. It's coming to an end. And so, Drakenstein, here in Paal in Wellington, a DA-run municipality, is also on track, working with independent power producers. Escom, jou twak is naak. And so in Drakenstein, also in Uwestrand, there by Hermanus, things are happening also in Wosten. Koga, a DA-run municipality in the Eastern Cape, they are launching now a 20-megawatt solar plant as well as storage capacity. Things are happening where the DA is running the towns. And so it happens in Langerburg, it happens in Saldana, it's happening in Cape Palgallas, it's happening in Stellenbosch municipality, DA-run mayors protecting the citizens. So we have a clear and a loud message. This is a public hearing and hear what the public say. Free us from Escom. Luiso, come forward. Escom must see that message on your chest. It's so powerful. Don't worry, we changed your name. Free us from Escom. They must hear us. Can you shout?
Free us from Escom! 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 Free us from Escom!
This is the message of the people. The mensen is hart. And I think there's a clear message when people are hart. Somebody said, "It's too much." Who said so? Come here. I think they must hear you. When the, when the people speak, you must listen. This is a public hearing and somebody say, "It is..."
Too much.
It is?
Too much!
It is?
Too much!
It is?
Too much!
It is?
Too much!
Escom, don't take advantage of the goodwill of those people. They come here in peace, but you are now testing their boundaries. Please, this is a public hearing. We want accountability. We want responsiveness. What does the responsiveness means? When the public speak, you must listen. And so we are saying, no more. Genug is genug. I want one lady who has a poster that says, "Escom is taking food off our table." Can somebody come forward? Isafa? Ifanyako?
Fun.
Like it. Escom is taking food off our table. This is what Escom is doing. Because there will be no more money for food if you pay 40% for electricity. In fact, we're not going to pay it. But if they pay it, there will be no food. In other words, if there's no food, you're going to die. So Escom's increase is a death certificate. We say no to Escom. And so the Democratic Alliance, where we are governing, our mayors have objected to this increase. Where the DA is governing, we are protecting the citizens by procuring electricity by independent power producers. I see a message. Somebody show me a time. Escom, your time is up. 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 I want to thank our activists because it's the working class, it's the middle class that are now suffering. Azolo, we can no more. The time of this event is not up. That time that you showed me is the time for Escom. Their time is up! Their time is up! Ond is hart! The people have spoken. Thank you very much for coming here. We really appreciate that you came out to support this. Your voice matters. Your voice is counting today. We are going to stop this 40% increase. And you, when you go home tonight, tell your children, "I was part of history today." We are going to stop this increase. Thank you. Het gaat so lekker hier nou. Escom. Escom, jou twak?
Is naak!
Last year, du zei Escom, ala kanie vos krach nie? Van die die steenkoel was naak. Maar dat is Escom's. Thank you, program director. Give a big round of applause!
Thank you very much, Dr Mayer. I think we're clear, colleagues. The public's voice is very clear. We will not choose between buying food and buying electricity. We will not choose between taking our kids to school and paying for their school fees and paying for electricity. We will not choose for car owners to, we won't choose between filling up the tank and buying petrol and diesel versus paying for electricity. Now, we're going to go inside. Our job is not done here today. We're going to go inside and tell NERSA with our hands up very clearly that we will not have this 40% increase. Now, I want to thank each and every one of you guys who are here today. I want to thank everybody who's tuning in online to say we are still here to make sure that we amplify your voices. For members of the media who are here today, our political leadership is still here. They will take one-on-one interviews if they're available. But that is it from Nna, Girafunane, Hayate, adios.
Welcome back with us here on the ground, South Africa. Now, we've just heard speeches from the premier of the Western Cape, Alan Windi, as well as the federal chairperson of the DA, Dr Ivan Mayer, and the mayor of Cape Town, Jordan Hill-Lewis. Some salient points being made here about what is at stake for ordinary South Africans who are barely making meat, making ends meet in our country. This fight is for each and every South African who's facing the high cost of living in our country, vulnerable South Africans who, if this 40% hike goes through, will really face the brunt of poverty in our country. Right now, we are joined by Premier Alan Windi. Premier, again, we've just listened to your speech right now, making some really deep points around why South Africans will be very impacted by this particular tariff.
Yeah, thanks Luiso. You know, year after year, Escom comes and asks NERSA for a way in excess of inflation increase. And so two years ago, we saw an 18% agreed to it, 13% last year, they're asking for 40%. It's 36.1% plus another 4%. That's 40%. Now, that is just totally unaffordable. South Africans can't afford it. We have a very slow growth rate in our country. We know that, I mean, at least in this province, our unemployment rate is lower than elsewhere, but still, we have a high unemployment rate. We have definitely an affordability issue for our citizens. They can't afford to put food on the table. And now we want to come with an outrageous increase that is so far in excess of our inflation rate, it's just unacceptable. We must reject it absolutely. And so we are here outside this hotel right now, where NERSA are holding their public hearings, and we are saying to them, "It is unacceptable. We reject it absolutely. You cannot have this kind of increase. Our citizens cannot afford it. We are standing with the citizens here, making sure that we get rid of this proposal."
Now, Premier, we also know that the DA is not only rejecting it here at the NERSA hearing today, but is also putting plans in place to ensure that DA-run municipalities have independence from Escom. Can you just tell us more about that?
So, so in the province, we, two years ago, put an energy council together. We set ourselves a target of 5,700 megawatts of new power coming in at municipal level across the province. We use 4,000 at peak at the moment, so that is more than the power we're using at the moment. So there's enough energy for growth into the future, for economic growth. And I also believe that as soon as we have a multitude of independent power producers, in actual fact, what will come and happen in the Western Cape is electricity prices will come down. It's the natural law of supply and demand. We are well on the way. Last year, 743 megawatts was put into the grid system across our municipalities. There's another 1,000 in procurement, plus another 1,000 to follow, so that's another 2,000. So we're well on our way. In actual fact, we had an independent study that showed me, and this was tabled at the, at the council, that by 2032, the Western Cape will be a net exporter of electricity. That is making a plan, making sure you're actioning that plan. Why are we having to do that? Because of Escom's failure over many years. I mean, load shedding wasn't just, you know, killing our economy in the last year or two. It's been doing it sustainably over many years and everybody's sort of got a bit of hope next year it's going to be better. Well, in this province, we've said, "That's it. We will put our own plan together. We can't trust what is being said." And of course, you can't trust these kind of increases either.
Now, Premier, there's South Africans at home who are saying, "Well, we haven't really had load shedding, we haven't really experienced it." What is the significance of these hearings on people who are kind of like, "Well, load shedding has kind of stopped?"
Yeah, but load shedding is one thing. The prices of your power is going to just go up exponentially and that's what we've got to stop now. So of course, we welcome the fact that we're not having load shedding at the moment. We also know that the energy system in South Africa is a precarious system. It is based on a very old coal fleet that actually should be decommissioning at the moment, but we can't. We're revving those coal fleets to the maximum at the moment to keep the lights on and we've hardly got any new power coming in at the Escom space. That's why we're having to make a plan here in the province. But you know, the Escom power system is one thing. These increases are another thing. And whether you've got power or not, these are unaffordable increases and we cannot justify increases like this that actually says to incompetent management that, "Don't worry, we'll give you an increase that'll help you pay for the continuing incompetence." No, we reject that absolutely.
Premier, before I let you go to go in there and make your representations, what is your final message to people watching at home?
So of course, we are saying to you that we believe in the pain that you're feeling and we are standing here on your behalf. Here in the province, we stand with the citizens of South Africa, saying, "Genug is genug. We do not accept these kind of increases. We should be having inflationary increases, not way in excess of, and it is unacceptable." So we stand with you and we reject these increases absolutely.
Thank you very much. That's Premier Alan Windi, who has really spoken to us about the importance of this first NERSA hearing that we are having here today, that it is important that we all raise our voices and ensure that we reject these 40% tariff hikes that will really have a huge impact on South Africans who are barely making it in this economy. We are facing high cost of living in this country and these representations that are being made here today are fundamentally important to stop these tariffs hikes and protect South Africans who are already facing a tremendous economy that has been very difficult for every one of them. But now we are also joined by Dr Ivan Mayer, who we heard earlier speak about the importance of these hearings and also remind the NERSA officials up there that they are having warm coffee because Cape Town and the Western Cape has been able to keep electricity going for South Africans. Dr Mayer, welcome.
Thank you very much and this is an exciting opportunity. It's a public hearing and the voice of the public matters.
Now, Dr Mayer, in your speech, you were outlining what the DA-run municipalities are doing to get independence from Escom. Can you maybe just explain that to us some more?
Well, we have foreseen that Escom will eventually one day collapse and for that particular reason, our premier has established a Western Cape Energy Council. Part of that energy council is to develop an integrated resource plan. Part of our plan in the energy council is to generate 5,700 megawatt. Part of that plan is to say currently, we're using 4,000 megawatts from Escom, but we want to increase it to 5,700. And 2,000 is already in procurement. We have already procured also 743 megawatt. So for the Western Cape, for the DA, in the country where the DA is governing, we say people are suffering too much. This increase of Escom is simply unaffordable and so we are in the Western Cape and in DA municipalities, looking at alternative energy generation to protect the citizens. And this is all over South Africa. All the DA mayors have already made submissions to NERSA at this public hearing to say simply the residents of South Africa cannot afford this 40% increase. In fact, I have looked at what has happened since 1994. Since 1994, Escom has increased electricity by 1,400%. This is absolutely madness. And if you looked at what happened in the last 10, 15... And if you looked at what happened in the last ten, fifteen years, every year, the Minister of Finance gave Eskom a bailout. All these bailouts never improved the situation at Eskom. So basically, at this public hearing, the citizens of South Africa say they are tired of paying an energy corruption tax because the money simply disappears in Eskom. You get less electricity, you pay more for electricity, and now Eskom is complaining that they are selling less electricity. Well, the citizens have spoken today. They simply cannot afford it. But you asked me directly, "What are the DA doing to protect the citizens?" Well, Stellenbosch municipality, Drakenstein, Mithwaal, Kogha municipality, every single DA municipality is now procuring from independent power producers. Here in the Western Cape, we've also made provision for trying to create one town completely free from Eskom. We have already identified that town. That town is called Riversdale here in the Western Cape. We are also having plans to have a second town completely free from Eskom. We have also made provision to protect every single DA municipality in the Western Cape. We procured forty-eight million rand total for the municipalities, for their waterworks and the sewerage work. No municipality in the Western Cape will have water running down in the street and sewerage down the street because we made available forty-eight million rand to buy generators to keep the sewerage plants going. But in addition, we have set aside seven point one billion rand to protect the citizens of the Western Cape. That's the Western Cape government and the thirty municipalities in the Western Cape. So we will do everything possible to protect. Recently, I'm the minister also for economic development. We've also made sure that small businesses also get some solar panels and PVA so that we can protect businesses. If you protect the business, you protect jobs. So that's what the Democratic Alliance is doing, but the voice of the people is loud and clear. We must stop this forty percent increase.
Dr. Mayer, you said that it is a public hearing, and therefore, the public should be heard.
The public should be heard. This is not a private hearing. This is a public hearing. And it's a hearing, that's the verb. They must hear the voice of the public. And the public came out here today, and NERSA must listen what the public is saying. They're saying, "Stop the forty percent hike." They say Eskom is taking food off our tables. NERSA, don't let Eskom bleed us dry. Eskom is taking food off our table. That's the message of the public at this hearing. And so, these people came in peace and in harmony. And so, we are asking Eskom and NERSA, "Don't test the boundaries of peaceful protest, but listen at this public hearing to people because children and people are suffering." And it's not only poor people, it's now the middle class, the working class. Everybody are suffering because inflation is around about four percent, and this increase is forty percent. So in other words, Eskom is making this situation ten times worse than the current inflation rate, and the public is saying, "No more. We are tired."
Thank you, Dr. Mayer, for joining us. South Africa, the fight continues. We are here at the very first NERSA hearing, and we will make sure as the DA that we get your representations and your submissions through. We are saying quite clearly, "The forty percent increase of NERSA is unjust." We are saying no, loud and clear. Enough is enough. We cannot do that because the basic amenities of South Africans are really going to be hit hard. Our economy is already going through the most. We know that it's been high cost of living throughout the couple of years that we've been facing these issues. So, South Africa, the DA is not stopping, the fight is continuing. We are not only fighting today, but we are also ensuring in the municipalities that are DA-run, that we are putting plans in place to ensure that power continues, that power is affordable, that electricity is affordable. Thank you, South Africa, for joining us for this live broadcast. My name is Louis Olompeti. Shabsha.
I am a mother. I am a father. I'm a daughter. I am a son. I believe in freedom. Freedom to earn a living. Go where I want, love who I want, say what I believe, and pursue my dreams. I am brave. I am a provider. I believe in fairness. A fairness where our achievements are determined by our choices and hard work. I am a leader. I believe in opportunity. A nation where opportunity is plentiful and everyone's rights are protected. I believe in diversity. Every person has a unique perspective and an important role to play in building our nation. We do not judge each other by how we look, but by who we are. We are South Africans, working together. We are the Democratic Alliance.